Good evening and welcome to the City of Warrenville Community Development Committee of the Hall Regular Meeting on Monday, January 13th, 2025. Deputy City Clerk Gravetti, could I please have the roll call?
Mayor Bremel?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Agustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Well, everyone stand and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now's the time we set aside for citizens' comments, and we have an individual who would like to make comments tonight. Mr. Hoffman, would you please go to the dais and introduce yourself?
Hello, Michael Hoffman, 3 South 436 Second Street. It's apparent to me that, and this is not just with the city council, it's with the county board, is that very few elected officials actually know what happens with these TIFs. And it's almost startling because the simplest way I can explain it is when they have a, when they create a TIF area, a TIF district, that freezes the taxes inside that district, not to the taxpayer, not to the property owners, but to the different taxing districts. And then the money that's accumulated as over the 23 years, possibly 35 years, that the TIF exists, the taxes, the taxes go up in that area because the value goes up. And what happens is increment, they call it the TIF increment, that's the money between where it's frozen to where it is at that point of time. The city gets that. But in turn, the taxing districts, the other taxing districts don't get that. And what ends up happening is they end up having to raise taxes, so it looks like they're raising taxes and the city isn't. They end up having to raise taxes on the people, on the property, on everybody else outside the TIF and inside the TIF. And what ends up happening is your taxes go up. You know about free buildings and stuff like that? That just doesn't happen. There's no such thing as free money. It's just that it's covered up. It's a school, then the school we just seen where they were asking for more money to work on buildings and things like that. That's, that's the problem with them. Now, me and, you know, Bob Seibert there, he's a TIF expert. You know, we've gone to state statute on, on meetings on the TIFs and things like that, you know, and they don't even want to hear any changes. They could be, I personally think they should be eliminated completely, but they are aware is that they could eliminate, they're pretty much a catch-cow for the government and for the developers, the way they are. And that's why, that's why when I was in office, I consistently voted against the TIFs. Because that's exactly what they do, is they're stealing money right from the taxpayer through the outer edges, from the other taxing bodies. They look like they're the bad guys because they got to raise their taxes. But you look at what happened up here on 59 with the, and I voted against those subdivisions, not because I'm against development, it's just that that is a complete irresponsible way of, of, of developing inside a TIF. You know, housing is, you know, per the TIF, I've read the TIF statute, I read the TIF statute when I was in office. You know, it, it, it's legal, it's, it's in the TIF statute, you can put residential in a TIF, but it's just completely irresponsible because housing is not economic development. And you know, what happens there is then you put, then you put that housing development in, on vacant land like that, now you're starting where they're paying very little taxes, so you're getting a lot of money back from that when you get to TIF district. But then in turn, they're sending kids to school. Now, you, now, you don't get 100% of the school money, but you get, I believe you get about 75%, unless they've changed something. And the same thing is the district, the library district gets something. But it's still a way reduced rate. And then you start sending all those kids to school, you start sending all the, all the fire calls and rescue calls and all that go there, then you got the, the fire department and all that, they got to start raising their taxes in order to cover that. You know, it just, people have a very, very misconceived about what's going on, on these TIFs and that. And I don't, I don't blame the people as far as citizens for not knowing it, they shouldn't have to know it. And they, they always hear whether the great thing it is, oh, big buildings and all that for free, it's not. You know, the bottom line out is, we're still paying for that because it raised our tax rate. The TIF is gone, you know, and then 50% of the money went to the developer, 50% of the money went to the city. So really, we paid, we paid twice for these buildings, and we're still paying it because the tax rates are up because of it. Do we have a lot more employees and a lot, it just, it's not a good deal. The TIFs aren't a good deal, they, they've never been a good deal, they can be changed, they don't want to hear it, they, they need to be eliminated, and that's why I voted no consistently when I was in office on them. But thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Now it's time for official and staff comments, beginning with Mayor Bremel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one thing, tonight, Warrenville and Bloom has done a calendar again this year. They just got them in this week, and they will be distributed around to various points so you can come in and pick one up, they're free. We'll have some downstairs at City Hall, they'll be at the schools and various other places. Lots of very, very nice pictures, some of which you'll recognize, and maybe you'll come in and pick one up and you'll see your front yard in the calendar. But it's very nice of them to do that, this is the second year in a row they've done it, and it's very attractive and it's free. So come in and get one or find one, have your kids bring one home, or library, park district, they'll all be available in the next few days.
Thank you. Are there any other city council members that'd like to make comment? Is, are there any comments from staff? Okay, then we'll get on with the business of the meeting, and tonight's first agenda item is consideration of resolutions allocating motor fuel tax and rebuild Illinois funds for construction projects. And Public Works Director Phil Kukler will tell us about this agenda item. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening. There are three resolutions included with the agenda backup materials. These are standard IDOT forms that are required city council to pass resolutions to appropriate this money to spend on city construction projects. The first resolution is to allocate or appropriate MFT money, motor fuel tax money toward the 2023 Potavia Road resurfacing project, which was west of Route 59. Staff misunderstood IDOT's requirements at the time the project started and thought that we just had to fill out IDOT paperwork, we didn't realize there was a resolution that had to be passed, that's since been corrected, and we're now trying to clean up the IDOT paperwork as part of this process. The city did budget or include in its MFT portion of the budget for that project, the appropriate funding, but this is the IDOT paperwork that's required to kind of dot our i's and cross our t's. The other two resolutions are related to the $866,000 of rebuild Illinois bond funding the city received from the state. Originally, the city's share of the Mack Road project was estimated to exceed $1 million. The, so city council last, I think it was last May or June, passed a resolution appropriating the entire amount toward the city's share of the Mack Road project. After that resolution was passed, the federal contribution requirements toward bridge projects changed, so the city was getting more, learned it was getting more federal funding toward the Mack Road Bridge project, reducing the city's estimated local share of the project to about $445,000. So the first resolution is an amended resolution to change the, to amend the amount of rebuild Illinois bond funds appropriated to the Mack Road project from 866,000 down to 445,000. And the second resolution is to appropriate the remaining $421,000 toward the city's 2025 road program. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from council members? If not, Mr. Lockett, would you care to make a motion?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council pass a resolution appropriating motor fuel tax and rebuild Illinois bond funds for the use on city projects.
Second?
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. The next item is consideration of changes to the 2025 committee of the Hall meeting schedule. Community and Economic Development Director Amy Emery will introduce this item. Welcome.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to begin with this screen, which shows you our fiscal year 2025 project priorities and community development. And there were three that were key focus areas for us. The first was the Warrenville by Design overlay, which I'm very happy to report was adopted by this council in August, and we've been working since then to integrate it into our code and work with property owners and developers on the opportunities it provides for them. The second is the special census, which, as we know, was another successful initiative that engaged the whole community. We are thrilled with the response, having the Census Bureau officially certify the results in October, giving us more than $420,000 annually until the next census, with a population of more than 15,000 people here in Warrenville. And the third project on this slide is our ERP. We have been dedicating a great deal of time and energy to this project. You've been reading about our efforts in the weekly report, week after week, documenting what we've been doing in community development, as well as our partners in finance and admin and public works. We are on schedule, which we're very happy to report, and we're excited about the software and appreciate the qualified consultants that are getting us to the finish line. Tonight, I want to talk to you about our path to that go-live finish line. And I want to focus my remarks on community development, but please know that what I'm sharing with you in terms of timing is also shared with our finance department. So specifically, let's begin with our vision. And I have added to my slide here Gladys, and she is our barometer for customer feedback here in Warrenville through this process. She's on board with the ideas of our vision for better service, and you can tell from her positive fist pump stance that she wants to see a more efficient government, she's looking for outstanding customer service, and she celebrates her Warrenville having access to great data to make decisions that they're comfortable with, that are based on sound reasoning and information. But what does this mean? What is an ERP? So I have a couple of slides, and I know you can't read the details, it's just meant to be a very high-level picture. This is in our build, our build is still happening, it's from the consultant. At the top of this screen, you see a dashboard, and with a dashboard, you'll have a single view on your screen if you're in community development of all of our permit, planned review, and soon our licensing activity in one place. Right now, we would have to go to multiple softwares to see where we stand right now, and sometimes they sync and don't sync with one another. This is going to be a very powerful tool for us in making database decisions and understanding where our priorities are, and allocating our resources, and making sure we're responding effectively to our customers. At the bottom of this screen, you see an example of one permit. With one permit, you can have all of the information about the customer, this will help our finance department as we're looking at fees and billings. If something is outstanding, our inspectors can see that, our code enforcement can be aware if there's an issue with a property, just all of the information at your fingertips, again, for one property versus four, five, six different pieces of software you might need to go to to get all of that information. For code enforcement, this is another example screen, you can see that they have a view that breaks down their types of complaints by category, be it light vehicles, miscellaneous. They can see individual records, like the permit one that we just looked at at the bottom, so if there's any particular case they're working on, they can pull up the details immediately in front of them. And then they can also get reminders on their screen, like, oh, I need to go out in the field and take care of this priority activity this week, it'll alert them right away. Here's an example at the top of the screen for planning and zoning, and this is a subdivision process. In this screen, our planning and zoning staff will be able to see when the application was received, whether or not it was approved, all of the different agencies and departments that need to take a look at it, the time that they started their review, when they completed their review, what's due, what's coming next, the fees that are associated with that. Right now, again, multiple softwares to keep track of that, easy to make an error, have something slip through the cracks, this software is going to make us so much more efficient in our efforts in that regard. And one more example of what this software could do for us, among many things in community development, it will allow us to keep our customers informed of steps that they might need to take. In this example, you might have a permit that's approaching its expiration point, and so the software will be able to alert the customer that your permit's nearing expiration. Do you wish to continue with the project? Are you completing the project or not? And so now we can track those things, but it's manual, it's through spreadsheets, and again, these things can get lost, the system will make sure those things don't get lost, and we're able to provide that heightened level of customer service. All of the information on these screens are things that we've been working to provide to our consultants through the pre-work phase, all of the staff members that are involved, all the processes we require, all of the deadlines, the timeframes in between, all of the requirements for each of these individual things, be it building permits or code enforcement based on our code, or planning and zoning. It's been a lot, as you've been reading. But here we have Gladys again, and Gladys's back is to us in this process. Why? Because it hasn't been impacting her in any way. She hasn't seen any of these changes, she probably doesn't know at this point what an ERP is, and she doesn't care about what's happening behind her. She just knows at this point, if there's a city government, if I need to apply for a permit or pay a fee, I can do that. How it works, what's happening behind me, not my concern. So Gladys, at this point, she could give two hoots about what we've been doing, but that doesn't mean we haven't been doing some great things. We've documented our desired processes, and that means we've been evaluating what we've been doing, how we've been doing it, how can we do it better, and giving that desired better process to our consultants. We've provided them all the data to inform all those screens I kind of highlighted for you. A permit, staff, code enforcement, and I could have made a whole slide with a list of all the data. And we've developed a lot of templates, so if a customer is going to have that permit expiring, we have a nice letter template that we've put together that the system will use to provide them with a Warrenville notice of, hey, this is what's going on, how can we help you, how would you like to proceed? We oftentimes, when reviewing the same types of permits, like a fence permit, will have standard comments that come up again and again and again. And so instead of having the staff type those out each time, we've developed standard comments so they can click and apply them. Efficiency's gained. Process notifications like the next step, what's your next deadline, when is the next hearing for your particular application? And then those alerts that you saw for the code enforcement officer, letting him know, it's time to do an inspection or something is coming due. All of this documentation, again, highlighted for you through the weekly report, just giving you that high level of what we've been doing. But we have some challenges ahead. The end is near, we're going to make our final push to the finish line, but the road ahead is going to have some impacts on our customers, which is why I have Gladys in this presentation to kind of highlight for you where those stress points are going to be. We are prepared to face the challenges of testing, timing, and unknowns, but I want to walk you through more specifically what those are, and then the tiny requests that we have of council this evening. So let's talk about testing. Test, test, test. The good, tests are exceptional in this. If we do all that is asked of us with respect to testing, we are going to have confidence that everything works as it should. We won't, we will uncover issues that we might not otherwise reveal themselves if we don't dedicate the time to testing. And if we discover there's a problem, we're going to be able, through the testing, to document to our consultant very specifically what's wrong on what screen, what needs to be addressed, what's not aligning with our desired process. We know that we have to do the testing, it is critical. And our consultants have shared stories with us, countless stories, about communities that haven't taken the time that they've needed to do the testing. They end up with systems that don't function, or systems where information is misaligned. So you might apply for a permit, but your information goes to another customer. Or you apply for a business license, but you get a different fee. These are not problems that we want to face, they're problems that we can avoid by dedicating time to testing to make sure the system's working as it should. The bad, there is a lot of testing to be done. The first few bullets here, this is very community development focused, but finance has an equal, I won't say equal, but they have a very substantial number of tests to do as well. For each of our different groups in community development, there are this many tests performed for each of the services. So do the math between the two, and I hate to say it, but we're over 12,000 tests that need to be done. That's a lot of testing. So what does a test look like? Won't call it the ugly, but we'll just say maybe it is, since we've looked at the good and the bad. This is a spreadsheet that we developed with our consultant. It shows you a series of different rows, there's seven complete rows here. Each row represents a test. In this case, we're looking at planning and zoning, we're looking at applications that are coming in. This is seven rows of the 200 for each type of planning application. In each test, the staff member will be looking at, did this do what we expected it to do? Yes or no? Mark it. What, what did we see? Was the result consistent with our expectations? And if it wasn't, we need to do a screenshot and communicate what was wrong. So if you imagine this multiplied out over these 12,000 tests, each of these things, it's going to take a great deal of time, and it's concentrated work from top to bottom. Imagine you've started a test, you're on step number 57, or 138, or 198, and the phone rings, or an email comes in, and then you stop, you address that issue, and then you've got to pick up where you were before, if you can find your spot and remember exactly where you were. That environment is going to lead to errors and challenges. We really need to find a way to dedicate time, concentrated time for our staff to do this testing and to do it well. We have thought about having outside staff, bringing people in to do the testing, but we don't feel that's the best path forward, because the staff members that are going to be using this software, having them test it, allows them to know it inside and out. And those are the staff members that have been providing all this pre-work and documentation. They know the desired end result. They will get us on the most efficient path forward in terms of the software working successfully. So Gladys probably isn't going to be a little bit pleased with us for a bit in time. Our timing with all of this testing is the last week in April and the first few weeks of May, and that is the beginning of our busiest time in community development. It's a four-week window in total, and we know, I put a few of them on the slide, that there are projects headed our way in that summer season. We don't have any option to change the schedule, this is the period of time that it is to be done, so we know we have to manage it for success. Nobody wants to experience any sort of delay. You can look at Gladys, and you can see she's like our typical customer in that window of time, she wants to submit her permit application, and she wants the permit the next day. Every community development department experiences stress during this period of time. Community development departments aren't staffed for the peak window, they are staffed for the average window, so we know it's going to be busy. But with this testing that we're facing, we are going to be beyond our capacity for that four-week window of time, and we need to create some time for our staff to get the work done. And then there are the unknowns, oh, the unknowns. There's always that big project that comes about that we have no idea about right now in January, but it pops on our doorstep in April or May. Weather, weather can be a big factor for us. If it's a cold rainy spring, there might not be as much building permit activity as there is during a beautiful spring, when everybody wants a fence and a patio and all those great new construction projects. We have inflation, we have labor shortages, we have strikes that can impact our larger projects. Those things are always in motion. We have a new administration taking office, and there's some questions about how that will impact our development season. Then there's just life. Again, you can look at Gladys here, and it's easy to imagine that she could have something happen in her life that she wasn't expecting, her granddaughter's graduation, she needs that patio built by June, she approaches us in May, can we get it done? That's going to be the most difficult challenge for us in this window of time, and that's why some of our strategies for communication are going to be very important. So what are those pathways to success? There are four of them that I want to talk through. We believe following these will get us, we know they can get us to the outcome that we want to see here in Warrenville. The first is to prepare for the testing. Beginning this month, we are gathering samples of every type of application and permit we have out there, so we have that data ready to test and put into the system once it's built for us. In April, we need to train our staff. Beyond just the community development staff, we'll be working with our partners in public works, police, admin, bringing in some of those staff members to act as customers, and have them apply and receive the emails, and making sure that they're working. Our custom software is being built right now, we haven't had a chance to see it or use it, that will happen in April as well, and so our staff has to be trained on how to use it at that point in time as, as well. Community development has also planned to delay the start of our fiscal year 26 work plan items in that first quarter of fiscal year 26, because it's right when the testing's going to begin. We've accounted for this in our work plan, we'll talk about it more during the budget season. We don't want to set ourselves up for failure, we want to set ourselves up for success, and we know we need to dedicate the time to testing, so you will see that as we go forward. So, creating the time for testing, this is where things get a little rough for our customers, but we know it's in the best interest overall, and it is just a four-week window on the radar. What we're looking at is, beginning in April 28th, Bay Corps and BSNA will be onsite with our staff, they'll be training us in how to use the software during that first week, and we will be beginning our testing. Their system is going to go live in May, not at the end of the May, in May, but the beginning of May. So that first week in time, the week of April 28th, is absolutely critical for us to drill in and focus on understanding how the software works and testing our most critical paths of application, so that we're ready for those when they come in beginning in May. So due to that need for the dedicated testing, we're proposing to close our window for that week in time. Of course, there'll be exceptions to this, if you've got an active construction project that's in the field happening, we're not going to have you stop work on it, absolutely not. We will work with our staff and with others to make sure that those inspections can continue, if there are code enforcement issues that need to be addressed, we will be on those things, and certainly emergencies will arise, and we will respond. But by and large, we'll be focused on reviewing these 12,000 tests that need to be completed. That will mean we won't be processing new permit applications during that week in time, and we won't complete plan reviews during that week in time. And again, our counter would be closed during that week in time, we'll have messages on our email, on our phone, letting folks know what's happening, and bear with us, it's going to be better on the other end. In May, we're looking at the possibility of closing a couple days a week, and I'm not saying that we're 100% committed to that at this point, my hope is we won't have to, but I want to put it out there as a possibility at this point, as we see how much we get done during that first full week and what's left to be done. I'm committed to keeping our office open three days a week fully, hopefully more, but there's a possibility that we might still need to close a couple of days, those there's a possibility that we might still need to close a couple of days, those first three weeks in May, to drill back in and to address changes that we identified or problems that need to be corrected so we can, again, go through the tests for those issues that arise during that window. This is also going to mean some temporary service adjustments. We're going to, because that window of time is in place, and we have time that we have to spend testing the software and rolling it out well during those first few weeks in May, we will extend our plan review periods. We are working to figure out exactly how long that will be, but what you might turn into two weeks now could take another week or more than usual time. We would also extend the permit review periods, same sort of thing. It's going to take us more time to review things. We certainly will be looking to use contractor assistance where we can to keep things moving just as quickly, and that would include both for plan reviews, there are plan reviews that we can have outside firms help us with, and for those in-field inspections. But that's another service adjustment because while they do a great job, they follow all the laws to the letter that are required, they don't necessarily do those things the same way that the Warrenville staff does, the way the community's accustomed to our communication style and so forth. So it is a bit of adjustment for the customers. In May, we would be looking to adjust our plan commission and zoning board of appeals agendas. We will be doing all we can to direct our developers away from that month and to come early, to come later, but we will likely either cancel or restrict those agendas significantly because in order to have those meetings, we have to prepare all the items, which takes time away from the testing and correction that needs to be done. And then the request that's on the agenda tonight, the change for the committee of the whole, is to swap the April and May community development committee of the whole and public works committee of the whole meetings. Rather than having community development committee of the whole meet in May, we would like to meet in April, switching with our friends in public works in order for us to be able to prepare for that agenda, and then in May, continue to focus on the testing. Same time, same date, just different subjects being the focus of that April and May meeting. Not a huge change. I realize I'm on slide number 16 to describe this request, but I thought it was imperative to understand why we're making this request. Communication is going to be absolutely key in this process, early, often, after the process. We will be developing information for our webpage and social media, the hometown happening. We'll adjust our email sign-off so people know that we're going to have this closure window and what we're trying to accomplish and direct them to the website about the new ERP. We're reaching out, and we'll continue to reach out to anybody who's communicated with us that they have a big project that they're planning this year, want to make them aware that this block of time, this four-week window, is going to be really challenging for us. So come on in early, come on in after. If you come in in between, we'll still help you. It just might take a little bit longer than you're used to. Again, the communication needs to occur before, during the process, and after. We anticipate it's going to take us through June, really, to catch up to anything that's been delayed for us in July. If we've extended the review deadlines, it just takes time to get those things caught back up, especially during the peak building season, when things keep coming and coming at us. There's not a, oh, we'll wait for you kind of window. It is. We'll be reaching out to all of the impacted parties for community development. That means our permit applicants that we have in the queue, new business license applicants, active construction projects. And for finance, again, remember I said at the top, they have these same pressures during the exact same timeframe. They're going to be reaching out to their in-person payees and using all of these same communication avenues to make their customers aware of the challenges. So to wrap things up here, we, again, can see the light at the end of this process. We're not behind schedule. We're on schedule at this point. Others have done it. We're not alone in facing this challenge as a community development department and having to release and build and test an ERP system. We have great consultants to help us. They've been very informative for us throughout this process. They've shown us examples and models. The testing spreadsheet that I showed you, those eight rows of 200, they developed that for us, and they've developed it over time with confidence to know that this is the tool to make sure we're checking for everything and avoiding real problems down the road. So we believe through this four-step process, we can be confident as we manage the challenge of taking, by taking these steps, by preparing for the successful testing, committing to testing successfully and creating the time to do it, communication early and often, and adjusting our service expectations. If we commit to these things, Gladys and all of our customers will be very happy for our efforts past the four-week window. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you for the extremely detailed report and ideas for, you know, bringing this to fruition. It's been thought about and worked on for many years, so we're looking forward to seeing the exciting finish line along with Gladys. Are there questions from the council members?
I have a question.
Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. Just checking that the public works at infrastructure folks are okay with the switching of the committee of the holes. They're not projects that will be impinged upon or anything?
No, I mean, as you've noticed, Amy and I both put things on each other's agendas as necessary. I mean, our staff's pretty flexible. I try to stick, keep public works items on my agenda, but I bleed over to Amy's agendas all the time, so we cooperate.
Thanks. Just checking.
Mayor Bremel?
Thank you. First, a commendation for getting us to the point where we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, and it's not a freight train. It's exciting to see this finally happening. We've certainly had some difficulties in the past, and I have really commend staff for the phenomenal amount of effort that you've put into making this work, again, after how difficult we had it early on. So you've made quite a turnaround, and it's clear that there's a lot of heavy lifting involved, and you've taken that on, and clearly you're prepared to do it, and I'm confident you will do it well. I have one small question. One of the things, one of the problems that we had early on with the ERP was using custom software. I heard you use that term a minute ago, and I thought that one of the reasons that we were looking forward to a new system was we were going to use software off the shelf that would be far more predictable, replaceable, and so on, because we ran into so much trouble in the past trying to have software made specifically for us. So if you could maybe just explain a little bit, that would be great.
Sure. So we are using the software off the shelf, the BSNA product, but it has specific information to Warrenville in it that we need to provide. So, for example, with a building permit, it doesn't know how many days our permit review cycle is or what our fees are. So that's part of the pre-work that we've been providing, or which staff members, certain types of permits and applications and reviews need to be routed to. That's the stuff that we're programming in there to make it customized, but all within its framework.
Right. So it's not software that is specifically designed for us. It's software that we are using, putting our information into.
Correct.
Makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Other questions or concerns? If not, Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council revise the 2025 committee of the whole meeting schedule to accommodate ERP software release.
Second?
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again for the excellent presentation. The next item is to review and file the TIF number three and TIF number four joint review board meeting presentations. Is there any comments either from the city council members or from staff regarding this matter? Okay, if not, we'll, oh, Alderman Davalos, go ahead.
Yes. Could you just expand a bit on TIF four on the revenue between, I don't have it in front of me really, but between '23 and '24, I think, there's a big difference in the revenue. I'm only concerned because TIF four is where we're going to be paying the bonded debt out of.
There's a big difference in the positive direction on that one. Just to be clear, there's not a big loss in revenue between those two years. Are you, I don't know that I can provide further information at this point, but I'm happy to follow up with you after.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to the next agenda item, to review and file the commercial vacancy report. Do we have any comments or concerns from either the council members or from staff regarding this topic? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and file that report. And then the next item is to review and file the bimonthly code enforcement activity report. Are there questions concerned from council members? I see Alderman Lockett. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think we were shooting for 1,000 signs. We didn't get there. You knew I was going to say it. You should have called me. I would have put 16 more out there. We hit our goal. Life's great. The one thing I did want to just kind of point out was the number of cases that were open last year. You do some quick, easy math of workdays and this and that, and it's about one and a half cases a day, which is actually, to me, crazy because it's like you get the call, you investigate the call, you determine what's happening, you got to follow up on it. So just kudos to the whole department because, I mean, to be able to track all that, keep all that stuff going, but at the same time, you're still getting one and a half cases coming in every single day that you have to keep chasing. I did notice on one of the reports, the same address was listed a couple times with the fines that were listed. Are those all separate issues? So all of those, it's okay, it's like the total. And then finally, the last thing was, there was a couple, I think, that were still there from like 2021, and they had some pretty big fines on it. Just didn't know how long until we take the next step on those.
So we handle those on a case-by-case basis. We are definitely working with our attorney on moving matters forward to the 18th district, but we can't handle more than one case at one time, so we're going for the biggest priority cases first. But we, you will see more of that in this year and beyond.
Perfect. Thank you guys so much.
Hopefully everyone will get the memo not to have any code enforcement activities during May.
No.
It'd be terrible if that happened. Okay, if there's no further questions or concerns regarding that agenda item, we'll move on to review and file the fiscal year 2025 community development work plan program report. Are there any concerns or comments either from the aldermen or city staff regarding this topic? Okay, then there's nothing to discuss under miscellaneous agenda items, and there's no closed session, and we have one more action to take. Alderman Crockenberg, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance and your support this evening.